All right, everybody. Thank you for your patience as we return back from executive session. We will jump right into this evening's agenda. And we are blessed, we always love when we have this opportunity to begin with hearing from our students, and in particular, a special presentation from the Morocco trip. And so we are excited to hear and learn with you all. So we will turn it over. There we go, Agenda Item 4.1.
Fantastic. Oh, good, this is on. Good evening, and thank you for having us here. My name is Ludi Augustine, and along with Joe Exantus, and Indira, and Elliot, and Frances, we're here to present about our Morocco trip. We got to go this year after it being canceled for three years because of COVID. So we went for the week of February break and had an amazing adventure. So we're here to share a little bit with you about that. And to start us off will be, what am I clicking at?
For anyone who has an iPad, can you make sure that the volume is all the way down?
I'm not sure, my clicker is not clicking to the next slide. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's good. That'll work. This is still not going. That's okay. Great. All right, so the first place we went to was Rabat, and Frances is going to talk about that. I think actually we can.
Yeah, so we went to Rabat first, which is the capital city. We got back, you know, after dinner after a long day of on the plane and on the bus.
Yes, after a long day of traveling, we got to finally sit down and eat. That's a picture of all of us just diving into our first Moroccan meal. We were eating kajin. And it was one of the first of many, many course meals that we had where we were completely stuffed. It was really, really great. We also visited, so Rabat is the capital city. So we visited, that's the royal palace, the group photo that we have right there. We, so we learned, our tour guide gave us a tour. And we learned about that Morocco has a constitutional monarchy and a parliament. We learned a little about the royal family. Then we visited a mosque that was, remains unfinished, but right there is a picture, the Hassan Tower, which is named after one of Morocco's kings that originally tried to create the mosque. Let's see, after our first meal, we got to, we were given a performance by the staff with the tea. You can kind of see the videos better, but they're pouring tea in a very cool way. Yes.
Good evening. We traveled to Kenitra, which is about 22 miles from Rabat. And we visited a school called the London, the Town British Language School. We spent the day interacting with students and teachers. First, they give us a tour of the school while we talked to the students and the teachers. After it, we had a wonderful presentation on the history of Morocco. It was also interactive. And then they took us out to lunch, and that was an experience. We had, I think, a six-course meal. And somebody had to carry me to the bus. It was so much food. We went back to the school. They taught us how to speak some basic Moroccan Arabic. And I think I have a video of me with a full belly trying to learn. Let's see if we'll play. As you can see, I already be taking math. The audio is not working. The students were much better. I'm trying, as you can see. All right, so after this, we we played a really wonderful game. We had, it was a game of Jeopardy. It was very fun and very competitive. We had a wonderful day. And at the end of the day, in the bus, our students were talking about how this was such a great day. And they connected with the Moroccan students. I would say that was the best day.
So then we went, you're okay there, Elliot. Then we went to the city of Fez. And Fez is, we went to the Medina, which is the old part of the city. And we had this amazing tour from Fatima. She was, is from Fez. And she like took us through the Medina, which these narrow little alleyways. It was incredible. And this top picture is the first university in the world, I believe, right? And it was started by a woman when she inherited money from her father. And so we went through and we got to see all of these different artisans in Fez, which was amazing. So we went and we saw them making the pottery. You can see Rob up there trying it out. We went, we saw people making brass pots, and we saw people making. We met with a weaver for a while, so this scarf here that I'm wearing is from that. And we got to see him do some of the weaving on the loom. And then they showed us how they make the silk, but not from silkworms, but from agava, actually, which was really amazing. And then we went to the tannery, which they give you a little piece of mint to sniff because it's kind of smelly. But it was amazing to watch them doing, like processing the leather and dyeing it and that kind of thing. So it was an incredible day to just see all of this, like beautiful handmade artwork that people are making. And, you know, they were really emphasizing the importance of maintaining these traditions and supporting these artisans because it is passed on from generation to generation as a skill. So that was just, it was a really amazing, beautiful day exploring that city. Then they took us up so we could actually see over, and part of the view was a cemetery. And they talked to us for some time, she talked to us for some time about sort of the burial rites and that sort of thing for the Muslim faith and how they practiced that in Morocco, which was really interesting. Then we went to Valubulus.
This is Valubulus. It's some Roman ruins that were pretty cool. Basically, it's just this 2,000-year-old city that has been opened up to tourists so freely. It was sort of surreal to just be able to walk around over the streets, touch the stones. We had a tour through the whole place that showed us just the different areas of the city that had been uncovered so far. There were the more affluent people houses with really interesting and intricate mosaic tiles. You can see a picture of that there. Those were the floors. As we heard of it, a lot of these houses had entirely mosaic tile floors. And then there was like a smaller plebeian quarters, I suppose. And what's interesting is that they mentioned that archaeologists believe only one portion of this actual site has been uncovered so far. So there's a lot more to see buried underneath. But we got to see a lot of the, like the waterworks. There was the entire system of aqueducts and a spa, I believe. It was just so open and free to touch. We saw this, I believe, on our way from Fez to Chef Chawen, which is the next town to. It broke up the drive. It was, it was one of the most historically enriching stops we made, I think.
Hi. So then we went to Chef Chawen, which is so beautiful. It's called the Blue City. And well, as you can see, that's because it's walls and like everything is just so blue and beautiful. There are different shades of blue, but like pretty much all blue. While we're there, you can see our tour guide up there. Once we got there, he took us on a tour of Chef Chawen. And it was really cool. It was, you know, it was really cool. We got to, every time you would look up, you just saw like mountains because it's in the mountains and that was, that was a sight. Didn't expect it, but it was beautiful. And then we also went to this school, which our tour guide actually went to. And he let us know that one of Morocco's kings also went there. Yeah. And then we saw very adorable cats. There were cats everywhere, but Chef Chawen definitely had a lot of them, and especially the kittens, the baby kittens. But yeah, he told us that they paint their walls and everything three times a year, blue. And it originally started because of the Jewish people that were living in Morocco to remind them of like home and their religion and stuff like that. So, yeah. Yeah. Oh, and there was a lot of Spanish there also because there was a lot of Spanish. There, no, some of the, some of the signs, actually our like home base, he taught us our home base like, well, he did tell us, Moroccans don't get lost. You just, you got like relocated. But he told us that like, there is a sign that said, Avenida Hassan One. And he told us that like, that's your home base. This is where you go. This is how you know where you are. But yeah, it was really cool. Oh, hi, I'm Indira. Oh, oh, I can, I'm sorry. I don't know that. I can try. Our tour guide Rashid, he was really cool. He taught us quite a few Moroccan words. But so did the students that we met with. And some of the things they taught us was how to say, hi, my name is. So here we go. Salaam, Anna, Indira, Andy, Stash, and yeah. Ken, Krafu, Ithaca, which is I study in Ithaca, and Shukran. Just thank you.
We had some challenges. There was a fire at our terminal. Yes. So we had to find another terminal, and communication was not clear. No one can tell, could tell us if that was the place to take off light. So we walked around a great deal trying to find the place to leave. Eventually we did, but not completely sure. And we waited till like, is it 1:00 AM? Yep. But our students were just wonderful. And they played cards as was advised by Ms. Quoffo. So that was an experience. And this year we couldn't do homestay due to COVID. So hopefully next year we can do that. And we're still working on, there are some of our students who couldn't go due to COVID. And we're still working on ticket refunds. And we're still working on ticket refunds. That process is still unfolding. And we had some successes. IPI grant, that was good. The partnership with the Moroccan school, we had a great day with the students and their teachers. The trip was economically and racially diverse. That was really special. And we had some scholarship offerings. Overall, the students had an amazing time and expanded their world and mine. It was my first time putting my feet on the continent. So it was an amazing experience. I was, I was very grateful to put my feet on the continent of Africa.
I mean, the trip was awesome. It was fun. It was a great experience. I got to learn a lot. I've, I've traveled outside of the country before, but like it was with family and, and it was also with family that we stayed with. But this time, like, it was, it was definitely different traveling with other people my age, students, teachers that I see at school. But it was, it was a good experience, like traveling, plus just being there, experiencing a new culture and people. And like, I've never been to a market before like that. And that was awesome. So, yeah.
Yeah, this trip was really, really incredible. I mean, yeah, what Indira was saying just about being with our peers was huge because, you know, a lot of us have never experienced traveling with peers, but you know, you're, you're with friends and you can just, you know, experience it together and just, I think also one of my favorite parts was the tour guides. We got a new tour guide for every single city. And sometimes just seeing, you know, you can walk, you can visit these countries and, you know, just walk around, but really like understanding the historical context and, you know, how they were built, you know, like going to that, you know, unfinished mosque and then hearing about how, you know, the 1755 earthquake like almost destroyed it. It really makes the experience that much more special and enriching. Yeah, I think also one of the more notable parts with that, you know, we mentioned basically everyone in Morocco speaks French and people in Chef Chawen spoke Spanish. And so it's actually just a really great opportunity for students to just try out the languages. And so everyone really took it as an opportunity to go up to everybody, to talk to servers and, you know, shopkeepers in French and in Spanish. And yeah, it was, it was really incredible. Yeah.
This would be the place to exaggerate, but trust me when I say this was the best week of my life. It was, it was kind of just amazing. I was so impressed by the food specifically. I was really worried that just given the amount I was eating, my stomach would have expanded too much that by the time I got home, I just wouldn't be able to be full ever. I bought a piece of pottery that you cooked to eat and the things that you saw a picture of. And every day for the week and the bit after the trip, I made one for myself. It's like a two-hour process to bake it all and everything, but I was dedicated. I was addicted. Anyway. To Francis's point, being able to use a tiny bit of Spanish that I have in Chef Chawen was pretty much the only time I've been able to do that. And I feel like I got better in Spanish. I didn't use it that much. Sometimes I'd order food and whatnot. So it was just a good opportunity to find new things and use the things I had had before. That's, that's what I have to say.
So we are already starting to think about next year. So you wouldn't mind going to the next slide for me. We, this year were able to fundraise $8,694, which was really extraordinary. We did a lot of leaf raking and a lot of donut selling. Forty-three percent of the students who went on the trip received some form of financial aid. It really made it possible for students to go who might not have otherwise. And I think Mr. Exantus spoke to the, the real diversity of students that we were able to, to take on the trip. That, that the cost of the trip was not a barrier. And then that the total amount of aid that was awarded overall was $12,250. Go to the next slide. Our goals for next year would be to take a slightly different route, that we would go south towards the Sahara and Marrakech. This time we took sort of the northern route up into the Atlas Mountains. We'd like to pursue more sponsorship, maybe business sponsorship for scholarships so that we can continue to make it possible for students to go and, you know, whose families can't just write the, write the check for, for the amount of the trip and really make it accessible more for more students. And then we would really like to do some more pre-trip language learning. It was really fun to do the language piece with, with the students. They were really wonderful. And we had done a little bit beforehand, but just the opportunity to practice it more. So that when we got there, we were really ready to like at least be able to, to greet people and thank people and things like that. We eventually got there, but it would be nice to like hit the ground, being able to do that a little bit more. So those are some of our goals for next year. And I guess at this point we'll open it up if anyone had any questions for us.
Thank you very much. It was good to go back and see when this came in front of the board back in October and how everything transpired since then. And I was glad to see Indira. I'm like looking at the picture beforehand. Is that Indira? So it's good to see you and the other students that, all of you that engaged in this trip. And I, and I saw different educators there. So what class was this connected with or was it a specific language class? As well as what program? Because you had a variety of students from different grades too.
Yeah, we did. So all the students were either juniors or seniors. And it's, it's through the Morocco Cultural Exchange Club. So that was started several years ago by some teachers really looking to expose our students to Islamic culture. People who had traveled to Islamic countries and said, you know, we, you know, we need to undo some of the stereotypes that we have about Islam in the United States and, and do that through travel. And to be able to really see what it means to, to live and travel in Islamic countries. So that, that was sort of the original intent of the, the trip. And then it, so it happened for a while and then during COVID, they had to keep canceling it. So this was sort of the first year back at it again. Our tour guide in-country Rashid is absolutely incredible and really set up an extraordinary adventure for us. It was really lovely. And he's a, he's a friend of Liz Crawford's who went from when she lived in Morocco for several years in, in her youth. So yeah, so it's, it's going to continue hopefully through the, the Morocco Cultural Exchange Club. And so it's a club that's, that meets on a regular basis throughout the year to, you know, to, to do a lot of the fundraising stuff, but also to do a lot of the cultural exploration. Yeah, it was an amazing adventure. The students were incredible travelers. It was so fun.
Other board members, questions, comments?
I just, this has got me really excited because two days ago I booked a trip to Morocco for next September. So this guy is just good. I like, bring him on, bring him on.
Well, like more, I'm nostalgic having traveled with students to Morocco. And it makes me think about the experiences and I think as was very well captured, just the learning. There's nothing that beats being on the ground, present, just feeling and seeing the way in which the world operates in different parts of, different parts of the world. You like me using the word twice in a sentence? That's fantastic. So thank you to the educators and to the students for sharing your, your experience.
Well, and I would just say that, you know, I, I have personally had not had an opportunity to travel internationally with students. And it was extraordinary. It was so much fun to watch them have this adventure with each other and, and pointing things out and asking. The tour guides were always so impressed with the questions that they asked and it was, it was one of the best educator experiences. It was really incredible. Yeah.
Any of our student reps, I want to make sure you have an opportunity to ask questions as well. You probably may have worked on some of this filed on the grant or someplace.
Yes, I did. No, I just wanted to say that that's a really awesome trip. Obviously, LACS has a lot of trips that we do. And, you know, it definitely inspired me to make a trip to another continent, specifically Africa, happen. And Morocco seems like a great place. So thank you.
When they were on the trip, I would like scroll through Instagram and everyone would be posting photos of their Morocco trip. So I saw a lot of photos and it like maybe something to consider for myself next year. But it was really cool to see so many people post photos and like they seem to genuinely have a good time. So it was exciting.
I heard a lot of positive things from the people I talked to who went on the Morocco trip. Everybody had, had something positive to say. And I know a lot of people who, who want to apply to do it next year. Yeah.
Well, thank you again. Thank you to our students, thank you to our educators. Thank you all very much. I also continue to forget that Indira is Rome. We will continue with our agenda. We have no one who has signed up for public comments, which means that we will go right into our student reps. And last time I think we began with LACS. So why don't we begin with the high school this time if that's okay?
Okay. Okay. Yes. I really like this space, first of all. Yeah. So it's been about a month since our last board meeting and students have come back refreshed from spring break last week. We are heading into AP season in May and students and teachers alike are working hard to prepare. Our wind ensemble and chamber orchestra are performing for second graders who are coming into IHS this Thursday and will be introduced instruments they will potentially play. The music department trip is also next Friday to New York City and students are excited. The freshmen and sophomore class are holding their first dance, the spring fling, this Saturday at the IHS gym. The senior class is ho, is hosting a chicken dinner fundraiser during the baseball, lacrosse and tennis senior night games next Monday and will be sold on the turf. TSA, the Technology Student Association, which I am the president of, is holding a Copper House, Copper Horse Coffee fundraiser to raise money for our national competition in Kentucky. And I'm hoping that our board members like coffee as I will be sending out a cheddar up link. I hope that everyone has read the Tattler April issue from this month. You can find them all over school and online. And parts of it are quite entertaining, but most importantly informative. The, this month's issues editorial explains how maintenance issues at IHS are piling up and are negatively impacting learning and creating safety hazards. In my English class, which is in a computer lab, there has been a consistent leak above the computers, which hasn't been fixed for two years. Teachers along with students, along with students are getting frustrated by the lack of communication and action. I'm sure the IHS custodial team has been doing their best, but it seems like additional support is needed. And we would like the board or Mr. Bryman to expand on this. I also wanted to talk about the lawsuit against Jewel that I think was on the board agenda a few weeks ago. Vaping is a serious problem at IHS and is also one of the biggest contributors to our bathroom issues. We support that our district is taking steps to mitigate these illegal actions, but would like the board to also expand on this and address more specifically what is being done to prevent vaping at school. And I do want to mention that vaping is a nationwide problem and is not just a thing at IHS.
The bathrooms in our G hallways previously were under construction are now open for student use. The ones upstairs are gender neutral and the ones downstairs are, is gendered, which was a decision made by our administration about a month ago based on student and staff feedback. Our H hallway bathrooms are now closed and undergoing construction. Within the first week of the bathrooms being open, students have voiced some concerns over the bathrooms. With only four stalls for over a thousand students in the busiest area of the school, the stalls are constantly occupied and followed by long wait times for people who would like to use them. People have also been congregating in the bathrooms, which is not ideal as the bathrooms already feel crammed and tight. These issues, along with many others, are widely agreed upon by many students and teachers. And there is actually a petition that was going around the school and recently sent to Mr. Trumble. We've been talking a lot about the student response and the construct, and the new construction, along with the issues I mentioned earlier. And Mr. Trumble has been very supportive of trying to create the best environment for us students. We're bringing up the bathroom stuff to, up to the Board of Education because we wonder if something can be done with the bathrooms in terms of construction as this is part of the capital project. Can something be changed in the bathrooms now to make them better or could it be too late?
The removal of urinals in the bathrooms has also posed somewhat of an issue for students. The capacity of the bathrooms has been, and prior to the construction, there was almost always no waiting time for a urinal. But now students have to wait up to 10 minutes for restrooms. And this also affects other students since students often don't put the seat up and this can cause a mess on the toilet seat, which is unhygienic. The urinals essentially eliminated this problem before. On another note, the food lockers are finally in use. There are a few of them located in places around the school that are further away from the cafeteria. And students need to type in their ID and their birthday to access the tray without waiting in the cafeteria lines. We're excited about the potential of the food lockers to reduce the lunch lines and make it easier for students to get lunch. There have been a few issues with getting lunch in the cafeteria because of staffing issues. One of the lunch lines out of three was removed, which worsened the situation with students waiting to get lunch. The cafeteria staff has done a great job being efficient and giving students lunch. But with the long line, it can take students at the very end of the line up to 12 minutes to get their lunch. Our lunch period is only around 34 minutes, not counting passing periods. So this is a pretty significant chunk of it.
Student, students have brought up concerns in our recent leadership summit over the new cellphone policy as its enforcement has been very variable for different teachers. The cellphone policy was enacted to combat students being on their phone during class. It is a widespread problem that interferes with students' learning and teachers' teaching. The concerns about cellphone use in the class came from the teachers and the administration is assisting with interventions and protocols. There have been consistently, there have consistently been late buses arriving to school. This has an impact on students' education. We understand that this is an ongoing and complex problem. And we do appreciate the information on what buses will be late being conveyed so well. With the warmer weather coming and air conditioning being few and far between, I believe a fan distribution plan is in need. We know soon it will be hot and humid and to get ahead of the request for air conditioning, I think that a plan to distribute fans would be helpful. Students are teaching the whole day in hot and uncomfortable rooms. Some will resort to bringing in their own fans. Although in some rooms, fans will do little to combat the heat. I think that it, that the district providing fans for classrooms will be very beneficial.
Great. Thank you, Ithaca High School, LACS.
So I will start with talking about our DC trip, which was an amazing experience. We were able to visit both the White House and the Capitol. And as well as the Holocaust and African-American Museum, which were both incredible experience and related a lot to the work we've been doing in our classroom. We also had the opportunity to see all of the embassies in DC, which really connected to the work that we did in the Middle East debates. It's, you know, it was really an amazing trip and we were able to just kind of celebrate all the hard work we did to pull off the Middle East debates for the 35th year. Yeah, and that was an incredible experience. We, us in collaboration with IHS are working towards planning our SOCU summit for this year. Us in collaboration with IHS are working towards planning our um SOCU summit for this year. Um, I, this is my first year year being on the planning committee and it has been. Amazing so far and I'm really excited to see how it turns out this year, um, and hopefully. Take it to the next level and also bring in, um, you know, more direct LACS contribution to that planning group. Um, yeah, and with that, I'm excited to welcome our new board rep. Um, I will let them give a more in-depth introduction, but I'm really happy to have them here.
Hi, my name is James Arnold. I am a sophomore at LACS. I'm not actually Zara. Um, I'll be coming more regularly, uh. Yeah. Um, so we wanted to talk about uh the new transition this cycle. Recorder to our trip, so now every Thursday, the entire day is dedicated to. Organizing fundraising and just going on things relating to trips. Um, Stella and I are both and Zara are both on the New Orleans trip. Um, to go to Katrina relief. We've been going down there for seventeen years. Uh, the, yeah, we've been going down since the year after her King Katrina hit. Um, and we're so so far on track for our fundraiser. We're on a little, we're on a final push right now. Uh, mainly we're doing yard work and so if anyone's interested in having some yard work done, reach out to us. We'd love to help out. Um, but yeah, that's a really, really cool trip. I went last year too and it was really. I knew so little about her King Katrina and what it did to the city and learning and getting to do this community service was really powerful. The construction that's currently happening at LACS is coming along great. It's looking like it's almost done. I look forward to passing by every day and looking out the window, seeing what's coming. We're hoping to have it done soon. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Uh, board member responses.
I'm surprised you said some group is going to New York City, uh, they didn't catch it. All the music. Oh, yeah, they, it used to happen every year. It didn't happen before, great. And uh, I'll see you too in New Orleans. I'm going to take my grandson Ryland Moss, so he's.
Doesn't miss his, his mother for the whole week. That's why I'll see you there.
Additional board member responses.
Oh, thank you, Stella, for sharing about the DC trip because last time we met, you was, you were rushing through. Being here to prepare to go and pack and all, so that's glad, it's good to hear about that. How many students attended?
I believe it was around thirty.
Thirty, yeah. And for how many days?
Four, three nights, four days.
Okay.
We got one, two, three, four.
Alright, good to hear and that you um saw all the embassies and the Holocaust Museum.
And the African American Museum. Did you have any kind of weight? Cause uh.
We didn't. We had, uh, I, I have to say we had an amazing um. Staff member, our teacher who coordinated most of the trips, so there was very little.
Great, and I'll let folks know, um, that uh we take notes. We try to make sure that we provide factual information to some of the requests about bathrooms and facilities. Uh, we are having another board meeting next Tuesday. So back-to-back board meetings and because we all know how enjoyable it is at the end of April. Um, so we'll respond to those questions then to make sure that we have as much factual information. Um, and encourage again, uh, folks have done it to attend the facilities committee. Um, to ask those questions, both about construction and about some of the things that are taking place, but we'll be doing some outreach in the meantime as well. All set, board members. Thank you, student reps. Great.
Thank you.
Uh, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. And we'll entertain motions. Or not.
I'm trying to get mine to open.
I move for approval of. Prove all consent agenda items listed in, all the items listed in the consent. Agenda consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students and minutes of previous meeting as presented.
A second?
Moved by Karen, second by Pat. Discussion? Questions? We don't have Mr. Malcolm here. I'm looking at you. Amanda, anything that you want to tell us about what's on the consent agenda in particular? I know we have some donations from the Ethica Public Education Initiative. We want to make sure we acknowledge and thank those donations as well.
Thank you.
The only thing that was new was the. P card, which um I just want to do a quick little overview of, um, because we did spend some time on that at that finance committee. Essentially, this is following along with our purchasing policy, but it allows for a little bit more flexibility for the user. It is tied to a purchase order. We still have to go through the same um expectations. You create a purchase order, which is permission to spend. A certain amount of money. You then get a what looks like a credit card, but it's tied to that purchase order. And it has rules in the portal about how you can use it. You can't use it just like a credit card. It's very specific based on that purchase order and then you can go and you can use that with flexibility. To, for example, pre-K, go and make their purchases for snacks that day or program supplies, but everything is approved in advance. And then therefore, if it's lost, you can shut it down. Um, you can actually set parameters if there's certain. Um, if we need a threshold and we actually exceeded the threshold at certain vendors, we can actually say, I'm so sorry, we can't use that anymore. Um, and so there's really a lot of of wonderful opportunities with this technology and we think it's going to be a great tool for the district.
I'm just curious, why Bank of Montreal?
So this is actually a consortium through the School Business Officials Association. And that is the bank that was chosen, I guess, through their RFP process. And so school districts who want to use this in New York State go through Hazbo, which is.
Jill, do you have a question?
No, thank you.
Would you hit mute? That would be fantastic. I'm giving a thumbs up that Jill can see me. Additional questions, debate, discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor? And that includes Jill as well. Thank you. Uh, our next item, we will um jump to item uh eleven, our superintendent report, Dr. Brown.
Uh, thank you for the time on the agenda, Professor. Uh, we have a couple of things and we will transition into our budget presentation. But let me just say first, uh, I've been inspired by our young people as always, but particularly tonight. Not every day of the fun day of the superintendent. Today was one of those tough days, but please know how you touch my heart by just hearing your thoughts. And your reflections and your questions, um, and the young people who spoke today too. James, welcome. I appreciate you. And how you transitioned from talking about urinals to food, can't feel as better than anything I've ever seen. Without a miss, like I hear it all and I hear your questions and please hear me when I say, uh, I look forward to coming back at our next meeting with. Some responses or reflections and answers to some of the questions you posed. Give us some time and particularly the one, eh, I'm in a very reflective mode, Professor, um. The question you asked about, uh, what are, what are we doing to uh take on vaping? And I'm sitting here, um, when I was seventeen years old, I was sitting at board meetings asking similar questions of the administrators and the folks in the room. And at the time, it was around smoking. And what is the school doing to stop smoking in the bathrooms? Because us athletes and folks who don't smoke didn't want to go in and it was becoming an issue. That was the late eighties, early nineties. And I'm going to give y'all an answer. Ultimately, that's similar to what I've gotten throughout my last thirty-five years too. Um, but as I fast forward to when I became an administrator in the early two thousands, it wasn't about smoking so much then. It was about marijuana. And as I sit here today, I'm realizing that at each instance, including vaping today, it has been illegal activity happening in bathrooms in schools. And the response, although I didn't like it when I was hearing it from the superintendent at the time, is going to be similar to what I'm going to give you today, but some new information. Yeah, the answer to this is education and there is a lot of education about the harms of vaping. On a body, period, just like marijuana and just like smoking. And today I sit here as superintendent and we're dealing with all three. Education is going to be the most important thing we do and then it's going to be, I hate to use this word and the term, and I'm hoping I have a better answer for you next week, but monitoring. And it's horizontal accountability. I know I could have disrupted a lot of the smoking of marijuana and sugar bags in the bathrooms in which I entered. And I'm going to be asking some hori- for some horizontal accountability here too. We don't have enough administrators in all mountains to stop this issue. And what I do know is through the settlement, and this is new. The settlement, there will be funds coming to our school district, around twenty-eight thousand dollars to do some things and we need to have a conversation about what that money is going to do. As I'm talking to colleagues around the state, because they're all calling me, asking me for some reason, what are we going to do? I have no idea, but folks are talking about surveillance. Putting out, putting up monitors and cameras outside of bathrooms. Folks are talking about putting people in front of restrooms with that money, paying people hourly wages. Stand in front of restrooms and a check, almost like you're going into a bathroom at a fancy restaurant, so that we will have a conversation about what we do. With the additional funds, but I will go back to what the superintendent, Dr. White, said to me when I was seventeen. Education and horizontal accountability is what's going to work. Now, we'll talk about some other things too. Anyway, that was, thank you for allowing me to share how much I'm inspired by you all. And I'm asking for your patience as we're attempting to solve a problem that has never been solved. And what we're dealing with is a perfect storm of things that have never gone away, plus new things. With that, we will, if I can, continue with my superintendent's report, uh, and talk about. Some of the work we are doing to prepare for this budget. And as we've said to our community throughout the years, budgeting is an ongoing process. And we have a budget vote coming up soon and we have board of elections coming up soon too. And as I'm realizing, I now need glasses for the first time and I don't know how I'm ever going to wear them and which ones are going to match my suits. I'm realizing. I can't see much of what I've written here. No, no, I can't, not gonna do it on camera now. I'm not gonna do it on camera. Um, but there are some things that we have done to prepare for the budget vote process. And while I, as superintendent, have no influence or connection to the budget vote or the election process. Those are the days I enjoy the most because I'm literally in schools all day talking to young people. I don't spend any time in the office because I don't want anyone to think that I have anything to do with it. And where does the board members? Let me be absolutely clear. While I'm talking about the processes we're using now to show up. Our approach to the budget vote and elections, please know I have nothing to do with it. I'm just to communicate, alright? But we have done some things. What I've learned and what we've learned, I think, is that our organization, our school district, a hundred and fifty-plus million dollar organization. Is going to need some additional supports to manage a process that involves so many people and so many sites, which has been a request from our community. To have so many different sites. There are a lot of small, I've checked with small city school districts and other school districts. Most places have everybody come to one location. To do the vote. We have how many sites now, Tricia? Twelve. And in the past, and we've known.
Finish the question.
I want everybody to hear me now. And I'm going back eight, nine years ago, so Dr. Bradwell, when we talked about whether or not we needed to. Take away some of the sites or add and what we, what did we do? In the typical ethical way, we added sites. To provide more access and opportunity, but we didn't add any sports. We've asked the existing infrastructure to manage a process that has become very large and ominous. So I'm here to talk about some of the supports that have been put in place over the last year to hopefully have this process be smoother. And one would be some additional oversight and logistic support in the board clerk office. Now, folks will see that represented in the budget process as we go into line-by-line analysis of that. We've talked about it. There are some increases in that board of education line, particularly with the board clerk, which is allowing us to have some additional support to do this. That has been needed for years. We're now doing. Some other things, the petition packet that candidates who are looking or seeking a board role, and I see some in the room tonight, thank you for being here. Though that packet, it now has additional information about qualifications, how to submit your petitions and signatures, more so than what we've done in the past. Very, very clear information. There are now also, when we talk about signage, I had never thought about signage and uh just, you know, that's something I had taken for granted when I go to vote in any other place too. But signage is a very important piece to this. We now have multiple checkpoints for signage, content and consistency. Including at the print shop, our grounds crew, our local election officials and others. So there are multiple checkpoints to check. For words on signage. Other things we've done, we've increased the number of ballots we order. We've increased that budget line to order additional ballots to be printed. And we have a protocol in place when we get to a certain number of ballots left. Someone's going to call, hit the red button, the emergency button, alright? That's also a call, Tricia, alright? So that's a protocol we practice now, we put in place. When we get to a certain number of ballots and it looked like we may have a, we may be running out, somebody's going to make that phone call. And we have some supports in place that will now get those ballots out. Again, there are other things too, but I hope folks are getting a sense that we looked at what we do and the supports that are, have been in place and have not been in place and we have significant improvements on the way. Cool. Anything you would add, Tricia?
Just pray for me.
And.
What's the date yet? Just uh? May sixteen.
May sixteen, and we're going to get into that in a little bit too. Alright, uh, before we transition, and there's no easy transition to talking about the funding requests. Any questions from board members about what you share? Reflections, thoughts, reactions? Thank you. Again, this ongoing year-long process. If looking at our webpage, the budget development website, you will see how we capture and archive the year-long conversations. Um, I know it's hard for folks to commit many hours to the, to looking at the videos, but every conversation about budget is now archived on that site. So while tonight is going to be a quick, now, my presentation will be brief and will be high level. Please know if you want additional details and conversations and how the board has. Grappled with this funding request over the course of the year and particularly over the last two months, for hours, you can go to our website. Tonight is not intended to go that deep into details for the next fourteen hours, alright? But we are going to address some questions and present some new thinking. And with me at the table, we have Dr. Bryman, Mr. Van Kuren and the wonderful Amanda Verba, whose voice you've heard from throughout this process. So the funding requests for our community, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we've been here and this is now the fourteen, fourteenth request I've put in front of our community. And each time I begin with this image and slide, what I'm sh- sharing with you, what we crafted as an organization of the governance team. Is in support of our vision and mission. We have a a pretty bold vision statement to have six thousand plus thinkers. Now, we've defined what thinking means for us, that's understanding diversity. Being in room and collaborating with folks who are different than you, new discoveries. We know, we talk a lot about thinking and we know to do that, we got to engage, we got to engage learners in twenty twenty-three, post-pandemic. We need to educate with the resources that are going to be culturally responsive and inclusive that our young people deserve. We need to empower student voice and agency and we need to empower adult voice and agency too, and I hope you see that represented in the funding request we're putting before you. And now we can add this. And as I think about my twenty-six, seven years now in education, I've waited. Twenty-six years to put a document like this in front of our community and to say, we are putting forward a funding request to support this. There aren't many school districts in our country right now that are saying they are striving to be anti-racist or to. Work to put in place anti-modulation curriculum. To support the development of the skill sets and the mindsets to do this work. It's bold, it's audacious. Why? Because it's never happened before. It won't be easy. It's not linear. It's not linear at all. We will take some losses. It will be controversial. It will be, it would, it will, it will produce resistance. There will be wins. But this is the work and this document is is an attempt to capture what we're attempting to do. And what I want to put in front of y'all tonight is our budget is in support of it as well. Yes, our budget is, has been designed to support students as learners and leaders of this work. Our budget has been defined and designed to support our educators doing the identity work. To shift and to enhance the mindsets and skill sets to do. Inclusive, equitable work in all of our classrooms. Our budget is, has been designed to allow for us, yeah, we, I'm thinking back six years ago. A funding request was for us to have enough money to have fifty adults come in the summer to build our anti-modulation curricular units. And I remember that summer. We had fifty folks to, at the table, talking about what would it look like to build something that's transdisciplinary? To allow for our young people to solve problems that are relevant to their local communities. It was a talent project then, alright? We are now here, years later, and we are saying we have, we're building a but funding request to have this happen in every classroom. And have every educator engage in the work to develop these types of units. And we can't do this without enhancing our structures of support. Now, while this, the things that are showing up on the slide now are not. Completely encompassing all of the budget initiatives and all that's incorporated in this budget, there are some highlights that I want to. Share, that was to share, that really speak to what we're doing and why and how it's, how they're funded. there are some highlights that I want to share, that was to share, that really speak to what we're doing and why and how it's, how their funds connected to it. The restorative justice training, I've sat through some of the best professional development I've ever been to, led by Dr. Dr. Wenz. And they've been working with our young people who we're, who are receiving training to lead our work around distorted practices. We have a brand new policy, a code of conduct, that is the most, I get calls every day from folks wishing to see it because they recognize how it's a shift in how we approach code of conduct policies. We know in order to implement that with fidelity and at scale, restorative practice and sort of justice training is going to be a big part of that. We're starting with the young people. This budget supports that implementation. This budget supports our literacy work. And there's a, it's going to be a, an article, a New York Times article that I hope everyone's going to read that really speaks to the science and art of reading instruction. We have been thinking about and talking about that, too. We have an approach to phonics instruction, and I wish Mary Brubbe was here, but she could talk about what we're thinking about and what we're doing and have been doing to improve and enhance our reading instruction. In addition to that, we're going to have young people talking with us to understand how we're taking that on, too, and young people serve as tutors, paid tutors, we figured out how to do that, supported by our budget. Educate identity work, we've been talking, we've talked about the micro conditioning program, look at the curriculum committee minutes and meetings, where we really talk about the micro conditioning program that we are now asking every educator to go through, that is going to be supported by this funding request. Our ongoing approaches are culturally and linguistically responsive pedagogies, the training, the professional development associated with that is going to be supported by this budget. Summer school, I remember the days when we were at this table as part of the funding request budget conversation, that we were talking about cutting all of summer school funds. And we had to reduce it at some point, this budget supports an enhancement and an expansion of our project innovation program, which I, we should all be very, very proud of, I think we've got to around, I know literally, nine, three hundred and twenty, three hundred and eighty students participating in our project innovation program in the summer and supported by this budget. Anti-racist curriculum for all, yeah, we have anti-racist, anti-modulation curricular writing units, writing workshops for our educators, and we're having educators do that work outside of contract hours, and we're going to be able to pay them, too. So again, I could go on and on, this is a whole board meeting, a workshop, I want folks to know that this budget has been designed to support our work, and those are some of the examples. Now, here are the numbers, and I don't want to bore folks, I'm trying my best to make this as engaging as I can, but when we talk about the numbers, the funding request that we're putting forward to our board to grapple with and hopefully approve, to put in front of our community, is going to be a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars in, a hundred and fifty-eight plus million dollars, all right, you can see the number on the screen. You'll see where that trend is from year to year, you'll see the overall increase from year to year. Now, Amanda, you, you helped me understand a new term the other day, CPI, the Consumer Price Index? That's the rate of inflation, all right, I sound real smart right now, that number is around eight and, what's in them, eight and a half percent?
Eight percent.
Great organizations, good organizations are using that CPI number as they think about the increases to their budget from year to year to keep up with inflation. Now, when you can come below that number and still do good things, that is good, right? All right, just want to make sure people, people here see that six-point-something, four-seven increase from year to year. There's a lot that goes into that, including a lot of grant funds that we're still getting, a lot of federal funds. But when you're thinking about how much the budget is increasing each year and is it keeping up with inflation or not, that gives you a sense. So with that, here's the fancy slide that I never try to explain. In years past, I've had board members do it, the last two years, I've had the wonderful Amanda Verba to do it. So before we get into the tax levy and what the, this budget is going to, how this budget is going to impact the tax levy, and then how it impacts the tax rate, I want Ms. Verba to explain what this all means.
Hello, everyone, I'm Amanda Verba, you have heard a lot from me over the budget presentations, and thank you, Dr. Brown, for allowing me to share this space with you. In terms of the tax levy, for the tax levy, I think we've talked about this during the revenue portions, which is very early on in budget season. Tax levy is based on a calculation that we do, right? School districts could put numbers into a formula, and that puts out a number that says if you stay within that number, you stay at that number or below that number, you're considered to be within the tax cap, okay? And that requires just a simple majority to pass your budget. That levy is a reflection of the total amount of money that a school district can bring in as revenue from taxes, right? From businesses, from owners, property owners, right? And so that levy gets divided amongst all of the people that are tax-paying entities or people in a community. And what you do is that levy amount based on your total assessed value, right? Which is the total amount of the value of your community. If everything had a, had a rate to it, like your house is worth this, and that business is worth this, and that property is worth this, that gives you a billions of dollars worth of value for our community. The levy, right, is divided, is the numerator, and then the total assessed value is the denominator. That's how you get the tax rate, when you look at it for how much your home is worth, and then you know how much you, as the owner of that property, have to spend, okay? So when people get tax bills, they're looking at their tax rate, that's what does it mean for me as a taxpayer? And my tax rate is a portion of what my assessed value is of me. And so rates often you'll see are, for us, it's sixteen dollars and currently eighty-four cents, right? And Dr. Brown will talk about what the rate will anticipate to be. So a levy is in the hundreds of thousands or hundreds of millions for us, a rate is sixteen dollars.
No one does it better than Amanda Verba, thank you. So what does that mean for us? This slide here is intended to represent where we've been since twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, when it comes to the tax levy. I will note very specifically, in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen was a year, and I remember that year. Because of many situations happening here locally across our state and country, we needed to override the tax cap. And that was the first time we had to do that, and we had to do some resetting, so you'll see how much the tax levy increased that year, and you'll see where we've kept it since then. Last year, as folks remember, we were in a very unique situation where we had an opportunity to raise taxes to go to, to override the tax levy without increasing the tax rate. And our community decided it was important for us to do that as we were in, yet again, a very unique situation as a community and as a state and as a country. So last year, we went over the tax levy, and you'll see that eight point four-six percent with the intention that it would not impact the tax rate as far as in keeping it flat. And our community wanted that, and we saw people come out to vote in a significant amount, in a super majority vote in favor of that. This year's tax levy increase is going to be three point nine seven percent, and that's going to the limit. Now, how that impacts the tax rate, again, I hope folks are happy to see this number is red, I put this number up red quite a few times over here, I think, we've been checking, we're one of the few districts in our state now, I used to say upstate central New York, I think it's in the state now, that has been able to lower the tax rate for the many, the years in which we've done so, and you'll see how many years we've lowered the tax rate. Now, I will know, if your assessment went up, you may still be paying a bigger tax bill. However, the tax rate is what we can control here as a school district, and we, as you see, last year, we held it flat, and this year, we anticipate it going down by one point four-eight percent. And so I'll give you these dates before we open it up now for reactions and questions and grapple even more tonight on our budget and funding request. These are some important dates. The budget hearing, where we can hear from, where we hear, typically hear from our board, our community, about their reactions and reflections on our budget and funding requests is going to be on May ninth, and you'll see the budget vote and the date for that as well. And I will turn to Tricia and/or Amanda, whoever wishes to talk right now, because we are going to have a bit of a, we're going to have some different polling sites. Talk about this shift that people are now going to experience, because people have to go to different polling sites, correct, Tricia now?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. On our website, we, by the Board of Elections, has updated some of the wards. And it's on our website to, to, there are certain locations, people had, where they voted last year is not where they'll be voting this year. But all that information is on our website, and our communications team is going to get that out to the public as soon as possible.
Yeah, let me be absolutely clear, our communications team is working in overdrive here. We are going to be flooding our community with information about where you should be voting because it will be different, and these are decisions that were made by our, what is it, the Board of Elections?
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections, not the Board of Education. The Board of Elections has made decisions about where people will be voting, we will communicate that over the next few weeks.
And this was due to the census.
Due to the census, another soundbite. All right, thank you, Tricia.
Yeah, well.
Just want people to know that and to have that archived. Now, there will be two propositions this year, two propositions, budget proposition number one is going to be the budget, you will see that on your ballot. Proposition number two, and I will turn to the folks who've been spending so much time talking about this, will include conversations we've been having about, Dr. Brian.
Thank you. Proposition two, we'll be looking at upgrading our electrical panel for four bus charges, chargers, excuse me. We'll also be looking to purchase five electric buses and three ultra-low emission propane buses as well, and we're very excited about that. We're also looking to purchase up to six passenger vehicles to transport students and for driver's ed, but we're really excited about this e-bus package for proposition two.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And with that, I, that's the initial framing we wanted to provide tonight on the budget. Again, reminding folks that this has been an ongoing year-long conversation, and we would love to hear any questions from the board and/or students at the table.
Could you just go back to the slides about tax rate?
I'm going to get there. Go back for me a minute.
And the previous one, so this is tax rate.
I got.
Increase, this is confusing to me.
Yeah, we got a number on a slide, it's an old slide, so that needs to be read.
So we, again, these are estimations, right? Because the total assessed value of the community doesn't get delivered to us from the assessor's office until late August. Right, because we don't, we don't start to do our tax billing, it starts on October first, so we're later than, than districts. Well, we anticipate right now, based on the initial numbers that came from the county assessor's office, we anticipate that we will see a rate decrease of two point five six percent.
Okay, it says increase on the slide.
It's, it's a decrease. Or a negative increases, a negative increase is a decrease, right? Because it's negative.
I quite get that.
Counting language right now.
Ah, yeah, okay.
So it's either a two point five six percent decrease.
Right.
Or an increase of negative point, negative two.
Okay, all right, all right.
You're still indicating the numbers are all.
Yeah, my number on the last slide needed to be updated.
Oh.
The next slide, but that's.
So the next slide.
Yeah, that's the one that needs to be updated to show the two point five.
Okay.
Actually, it's more significant than what is being shown.
So it's being shown as a decrease of one point four eight, but it's actually two point five six.
That one point four eight number is incorrect, we got to change that to two point five six, yeah, that's.
Okay. That helps.
Yeah, but it's going to be two point five six, yeah.
Right, so the tax rate, if it's not a percentage, we're anticipating that would go down about forty-three cents for a thousand assessed value. So then.
Given number, Amanda, sixteen.
Sure, so, so currently, the tax rate for this current year is sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents.
For a thousand.
Right, so if you have a hundred thousand dollar home, remember you also get that star rebates and things.
Yeah, right, right.
So, you know, your typical tax bill for this year would have been about one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, okay? And so, or, I'm sorry, one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, we anticipate that will go down to one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. So it'll be a savings of about thirty dollars if you have a hundred thousand dollar home. Because for each thousand dollars you're assessed at, we anticipate forty-three cents decrease.
And then the tax, the tax levy and the tax cap, so we're under the tax cap.
We are at the tax cap.
We're at the tax cap.
So we are not leaving any funding on the table.
Right.
Right, we are decreasing the rate, and we are staying at the cap, which requires that our budget is passed at a simple majority, not a super majority like last year.
Okay.
Additional questions from board colleagues?
Just one, so we can get on the record, could you please explain which municipal entity is responsible for assessments?
It's pretty easy, and I don't know if that's a trick question, what's the Tompkins County Department of Assessments are in charge of assessments?
That's all we're going to say about that.
Additional questions? Student reps, questions you have about?
Anything.
About the presentation you just saw about the budget in particular, and it could include taxes, yes.
Yeah, we will upload these slides, and they will, they will be on the website along with every other presentation that we.
There is a budget website that includes archival information, including documents, and so I'm sure you may have seen it, but that's where I imagine this presentation will be hosted as well.
And what we add after tonight, hopefully, if the board approves this request, we have a frequently asked questions site that goes up with all the questions we typically get, and we continue to add.
And just in terms of timing, should the board agree to adopt this budget as stated, it would also include conversation, FAQ, and a mandatory public hearing. And that is the event that happens on March ninth, March, May ninth. It also include a number of conversations individually, I'm sure, with a number of folks as well, so. This is an ongoing conversation, and I know we repeat it often, and it continues to bear repeating that this was a for sending well wishes up there, that this is a year-long budget process, and so not even, not even after this election, before this election, we're already starting the budget process for next year, so we're, we're already in that path. So if you don't hear significant questions from board members, please know that this has been an ongoing dialogue, a robust last findings committee of the past couple of finance committees that we've been engaged in a number of our questions, doesn't mean we won't have more tonight, but I just want to make sure that folks know that this is an ongoing dialogue that we're engaged in all year long. Joe, I'm looking at you to see if you have any particular questions or comments. And I'm sorry you're muted because I asked you to mute, my apologies.
I unmuted, and I said I do not have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Joe. Elder.
I just want to thank our thank our leaders for making it so clear that our entire budget is now behind our efforts to shift how we teach our students, what we teach our students, how we engage them. It's not a one-off, it's not in a pocket somewhere, Dr. Brown's inner pocket, this is the work, and it infuses everything we do, so thank you for that. Thing is very clear, it is very powerful, and looking forward to moving on.
There's a couple of items that I want to highlight for folks that I think are extremely important, and Amanda, I know you've talked about this at other board presentations, particular with the COVID relief money that was coming to school districts, and we knew was temporary and that if the district was going to continue some of that work, it would have to include in the budget. And so it would help explain some of the increases that we may see. But I am particularly pleased, and I know there's still work to be done, that we have added a number of social workers and psychological services, given what I'm hearing at the collegiate level and from my colleagues across the state at the K-12 level, that there is an increased need for school districts to pay much more attention to the mental well-being and health of students. And so I know that that does not address all the things, but it is a financial indication, and if I follow Dr. King's idea that a budget is a reflection of values, that if we're adding resources to particular areas, hopefully that means that we value those areas, so. I was pleased to see that in the budget, and it is a sizable increase, but one that I think. But one that I think that we could hopefully agree that is an absolute necessity, and I know that's through K-12 as well. So that was one agenda or line by line item that I saw. And I'm sure there are others, but I'll hold on in case other board members have things they want to add.
While y'all are thinking, I will say on behalf of our team, we would love for an approval tonight. That allow for us to get busy with the website updates, with the frequently asked questions, with the communications. I know you have some, you could defer this to another meeting, like tomorrow or the next day. But it would be great for us if you could get an approval tonight, and yes, this is what I would love to see the board approve for us to put in front of our community.
Yeah, we don't actually have much time, so it would be tomorrow or the next day.
We have audit committee tomorrow.
Well, if there are no additional questions, then maybe we should continue down the agenda to agenda item twelve point one, which is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four ICSD budget adoption. You will see it's a single page that includes a much more truncated version of the information than the seven or eight page line by line or the eight hundred and thirty-four page of the actual line by line that folks may go through. And so if that's where at, we can entertain motions and then discuss and debate.
I will move to approve the final budget for the Ithaca City School District for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. In the amount of one hundred fifty-eight million dollars, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand and eighty dollars.
Zeros, and then some zeros.
That may be one of the first times. It's been moved.
I'll second it.
Moved by Pat, seconded by Moira. Discussions, debate, comments, questions?
I'll just say that as Sean has said, we, we have been discussing and debating various portions of this budget and the budget in its entirety throughout the year. And unlike many, many years ago, this is a process that is transparent to the district throughout the year. And, and we've, Amanda has very kindly, of course, it is her job. Presented portions of the budget as we go along. So so this is a result of increased staffing. Multiple years of significant raises for our teachers and for other staff that preceded the pandemic and which were called for by our, our staff and, and our community as a priority. And that the vast majority of this money is for salaries, benefits, health insurance, pensions for our staff and our retirees.
I think Jill had a question.
Yes, Jill, sorry.
I mean, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, very good. I, I am going to be voting against the approval of this budget at this time. And that is, as some of you know, I have expressed numerous objections to some of the staffing increases. And I've only been involved in this budget process, to my knowledge, for approximately the last two months. So although I have a lot of respect for the people who've put the budget together and, and largely in agreement with the district's goals. I do not feel that any due diligence has been paid to looking at places where there could have been cuts in this budget that would have at least given some hope and opportunity to feel that the district is responding to the concerns of taxpayers who are overburdened. And I understand arguments against what I'm saying, but I cannot in good conscience vote for this for the approval of this budget at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, I'd like to thank Amanda and team and Dr. Brown and everyone involved. But I know that Amanda has been the individual at the forefront at times with all of these budget discussions at finance committee, at facilities committee, at every committee and talking about even when we had the tour on the EV bus. Because it's not a school district decision to get an electrical vehicle. It is, we definitely heard from the students and sustainability program. But it's, 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 we're being pushed, encouraged in a nice way by New York State without sometimes the additional funding. So that's why that proposition. I'm, I'm thankful as a new board member that we started the discussion from when the audit committee had met back in September, October. There were different discussions and iterations on this. And as you would see, I have all my notes here and I'm always writing and seeing, well, what's my next question? So I'm appreciative of the various documents that were presented in different formats and different ways and presenting this budget and presenting the breakdown and getting together the different groups that you had stated a few months ago, Amanda. And when we heard from like facilities, athletics committee and knowing that all the administrators got together to share about what their increase is or what their decrease, what they're cutting and so forth. And, and that we heard from the community. We know that we've gone through a pandemic which has been challenging, challenging to our educators, challenging to our students, challenging to even our facility workers and everyone within the school district that we've heard from everyone within here in the budget definitely reflects that. And ensuring that our students get the services they need too. And that's also one of the things and hearing, as a new board member, I, I've been trying to go to different meetings presented by NISBA as well as the Central New York School Board Association. And just hearing about all of the requirements that school districts have to meet and mandate it from New York State and from Albany. So I, I can definitely vote for in favor of this budget, knowing that all that we've gone through. And I just have to say thank you, because I'm, I'm glad, sometimes, well, I'm glad I'm in this position and not in your position, Amanda, to get through all of these numbers and try to remember everything. So I, I do appreciate that, the questions and how you've answered everything. And, and we always have the less, and we continue to have the let's talk portal for the community members to just ask any question at any given time so that we can relay the information and answer their questions.
Any additional comments? Well, with that, we will call the question, all those in favor? Do you have that recorded, Tricia? All opposed? Great. Thank you, the resolution passes. It brings us to item twelve point two, the resolution to adopt the property tax report card. And we should ask Amanda to speak, speak to that to make sure everyone knows what the difference is.
It, there is a little bit of a crosswalk, right, between what you just approved, which was the school district budget notice, which has information about the, the tax cap calculation as well as what would happen if, if the budget was voted down after two tries. And we would have to go to a contingency budget, so that's what you just voted on. There's information also about the three-part breakdown on that document in terms of administrative component, program component, capital component, as well as what we're asking the community to fund from the capital reserve. You'll notice that this property tax report card has a lot of the same information. But what it does is it builds on even more transparency and allows for the community to understand what the school district has in their reserves, which are savings accounts for a particular purpose and fund balance, which are savings accounts that are broader in nature, that can be used to balance your budget as well. And those are oftentimes, you'll hear about the four percent state comptroller, four percent. The state comptroller asks us as school districts to not max over a four percent limit of if you took four percent of your budget amount to have in that unrestricted fund balance, right? The one that isn't set aside for a particular reason. So that's what the property tax report card is, it is a transparency tool, the community to let folks know that we're asking for this money, you know, to not exceed the budget amount. And we also acknowledge that we have savings set aside that we are most, we are using to balance our budget either out of reserves for particular purposes or to utilize to balance the budget from just that general fund. And we're using all of those opportunities in the revenue side.
So with that, we'll entertain any motions and then up for debate and discussion.
I move to adopt the property tax report card to accompany the annual school district budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Moved by Pat.
Second.
Seconded by Moira. Questions, conversations, debates? Hearing none at this time, I'll move the question. All those in favor? You got that for sure? All those opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. It brings us to agenda item twelve point three, a resolution regarding the election of members to the board of Tompkins County, Tompkins Seneca Taoga Board of Cooperative Education Services, TST Bozies. There is a slight change here on this document to make board members aware. What we did previously was put forward the candidate for the Ithaca City School District. This is now asking us to vote on the slate of candidates for all the vacancies. And also included in board docs is a letter from Truensburg Central School District, who has asked us to write in a candidate for their school district. And the candidate's name is Helen Arco. And it included, all board members should have received this information directly to your email as well. So we can entertain motions and then engage in conversation.
I will move item twelve point three to regarding the election of members to the Board of Tompkins Seneca Taoga Board of Cooperative Educational Services.
Moved by Moira.
I second.
Seconded by Karen. Questions, debates, conversation? Hearing none, and I'm gonna assume that we're in agreement with the right end, following what Truensburg has asked us to do as one of the districts. I will ask the question, all in favor? You got that, Tricia? The motion passes. It brings us to agenda item twelve point four, the resolution regarding the tentative administrative budget of TST Bozies and their educational services. And we had a presentation on the TST budget at a recent finance committee where folks gave a fairly detailed description of the administrative budget. But for right now, we'll entertain motions. I will move the motion to approve the tentative administrative budget of TST Bozies Board of Cooperative Educational Services.
Second.
Moved by Eldred, seconded by Pat. Questions, conversation, debate?
Just a comment, if anyone needs an extra copy, I do have an extra one right here.
And just a very quick question, I'm assuming that this, this tentative payment is included in the budget that we've adopted or that we've proposed.
So this is the administrative budget, so it includes the administrative costs as well as their capital cost. So you will see that in the budget in its own line item. And then you will also see, not included in the vote that you're making right now, all of the other Bozies costs. You'd have smattered throughout the, the, the budget document, depending on where it would lie in that accounting code.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none at this time, we'll call the question, all in favor? The motion passes. Brings us to agenda item twelve point five, a resolution to approve expenditures for the NISBA policy workshop that Moira is gonna spend significant amounts of time attending virtually. Should this resolution pass, we will entertain motions.
I move to approve expenditures for Moira Lang and Moira Lang alone to attend the April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three NISBA Live Virtual Policy Workshop. And thank you for your willingness to do this.
I second.
Moved by Pat, seconded by Karen. Questions, comments, discussion?
Pat, you love policy.
I still have a day job, Moira.
Oh, that's. Last one I went to was on a Saturday morning.
I'm working that Saturday. I am in fact, working that Saturday and that's.
Anyway, this is April twenty-sixth, this is that, oh, Wednesday.
I'm working that Wednesday.
I just find it fascinating that Moira was able to say the last one that I went to. Hearing no additional discussion or conversation at this point in time, we'll ask the question, all in favor? Tricia's recorded, the motion passes. The next agenda item is agenda item twelve point six, medical specialty drugs and prior authorization. I don't know, is it, Bob is gonna be speaking this, Mr. Van Kuren?
Through the short straw on this one. Thank you all. Christina, thank you, hi. Christina from EMV is here and she can do a much better job than me explaining it to you. It does not require the board to take any action tonight because there's not a direct expenditure of funds. I really wanted to bring it to the board's attention and vet it here for two reasons. One, it, it deals with prior authorization. And that was one of the hot topics for the Medicare Advantage Plan that we were talking about and another matter a few weeks ago. And so I thought maybe, you know, instead of us taking action behind the scenes, that the board should at least be aware of what's happening here. And then secondly, which is for a broader discussion, discussion, a later date, maybe in a committee meeting, is how going forward, we should make decisions such as this on our, on our healthcare plan. When you combine both health and money, it is the most emotional things I think we deal with from an employee benefit standpoint and a union standpoint. So I think some attention needs to be paid, again, not tonight necessarily, about how we go about to make these decisions. Should it be someone in-house like me or Amanda, or should it be brought to the boards for a vote? Or should it be policies that we draft and pass through the policy committee and board as a whole? Those are the two reasons it's here. Christina, if you want to take it from here and just give your, your thoughts.
Sounds good. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for having me. I just want to give you a little bit of background into what we're talking about tonight. So we're talking about medically administered prescriptions. So we're talking about medically administered prescriptions. So that is a prescription like a Stellara that is administered right in the doctor's office. Now, how this impacts your health plan is if someone were to go get a prescription at a pharmacy, your contract states that you have discount guarantees, you receive rebates. So it's very aggressive and beneficial to the plan when prescriptions run through your prescription program. When prescriptions are administered in the doctor's office, um unfortunately, there's no discounts, there's no rebates. And actually, if there are rebates, Exelis gets to keep those as a part of the contract. Um, so that's just a little bit of background. Um, also, um, on the, when it comes to specialty medications, you probably have, have read a little bit about them. Very specialized, um, it oftentimes takes some trial and error with frequencies and doses. And there's, uh, on specialty drugs, even on your uh plan today, there are prior approvals that are in place just to make sure they're safe for certain patients. And that's on the prescription side of things. If someone today though, gets a prescription uh that's medically administered at their doctor's office, there is no uh prior approval, uh, which could mean that they are potentially getting something that's not medically necessary. Um, what that could also mean is if it is truly deemed not medically necessary, that could also leave the member responsible for the bill. Um, so this topic has come up, um, your plan, I think, spends about a million dollars per year on, uh, we call them J code drugs or medically administered prescriptions. Um, so it's definitely a conversation. Um, Bob and I had talked about this a little bit. He had some, you know, questions for me. Bob, is it okay if I just run through those questions you had and, and the answers?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Christine.
Okay, um, so when Bob and I were talking, you know, he had just some general questions. Um, because again, I think when people think prior approval, you know, they're worried. Um, but the rate, uh, when Exelis looks at their book of business, the approval rate uh of these medically administered prescriptions is eighty point eight percent. And of the percentage that's denied, the members are getting something that's clinically appropriate. Okay, so um instead of like I used Stellara as an example, just because it's very expensive, if someone has Crohn's disease, there's a more appropriate level to start at, right, than Stellara. So instead, maybe Stellara wouldn't follow the prior approval process, but they would get something that's appropriate. So someone's not just left without a medication. Um, the next question Bob asked was, um, what is the average response time, right? So he was concerned about, you know, will members have to wait at the doctor? Um, when it comes to these specialized conditions, it's often uh not a case where you'd go into the doctor and you need the drug immediately. It's usually the doctor's done some legwork, um, there's a conversation, you know, do you want to go down this road? So it's not usually immediate. Um, if someone did have an appointment though and needed an approval, like let's say within a day, the doctor would just communicate the need for the quick authorization. Um, and then if that drug wasn't decided on until after the visit, um, the prior, or the prior approval process is about seventy-two hours. So it really depends on the circumstance, um, but Exelis is able to accommodate that if there's, if there's a time constraint. Um, let's see, um, and then I think your, your last question too was just about, you know, if it, if it's needed urgently. And again, there is a process um by which the doctor would just call Exelis it and the timeframes can be met. So that's basically the process of uh the medically administered uh prescriptions. Um, so the question is uh whether or not you do want to include prior authorization on medically administered prescriptions. And this has also come up because your renewal with Exelis is July first. So in order to get all the proper documents that we need, we would need a, a decision on that, yes or no?
Thanks, Christina. And just to be clear, some of these drugs uh can range into the hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. To my knowledge, we don't have anyone on our plan right now who's uh utilizing it to that level. I may have misspoke at a different meeting.
No, you're correct. I think the highest level right now is a ninety thousand dollar drug.
We do have some that are in medical specialty drugs, but a lower level than something that could really cause uh cost the plan a lot of money. And again, it doesn't require board um voting, but certainly if we want to discuss it a little more.
Christina, would it be possible for you to send board members additional information around this topic specifically? If there's an article or uh something that we can read to be able to help us think a little bit more deeply about what we would be asked to vote on? Could I, can we ask that of you?
Sure, I'd be happy to provide some bullets just of what we talked about today, some additional information. And if there's any other questions that the board has, I'm happy to answer.
Questions from board members?
So we will be voting on this, but not now.
It's really up to the board, because it's not an expenditure of funds correctly, it doesn't have to be voted on. I can certainly sign it off now. But if the board wishes to take take it to vote, of course you can, absolutely.
Well, in, in your material, when you send it out once it's finalized, can you give some examples of what is it? Um, it's not diabetic medication like an insulin and all, because you don't need um specialty, like you don't need to refrigerate that.
Christina, you probably have a list of these drugs from A to Z, um, and maybe thinking the board might uh like to look at some costs.
Yeah, I certainly can provide um some examples and, and I keep using Stellara just because it's the one I see most often. Um, you know, the doctors will say, well, while you're here, why don't I just administer this, you know, for someone maybe that um is newly diagnosed with Crohn's? Um, but when you look at, you know, the um criteria, you look at the research, really, it's not always the best to go right to the most expensive one because it's not as effective too. So having that prior approval also helps someone get a more appropriate drug. Yes, I'm happy to put some examples and some costs in uh, in that email.
But there might not be a generic one in either, so there's that option, so.
Yeah, yeah, in most cases, there's probably not a generic, but it's, there's a more appropriate, but usually less cost, even though it's not a generic, yeah?
Oh, so, no, I just have, so this, this involves that we're, we're moving to a new um, a new insurance plan for but our insurance, the current insurance plan for employees is changing.
This is the active side.
The active side.
And it would uh just put in place a preauthorization. So the plan itself isn't changing, it's ju- just whether we have a pre auth for these type of drugs.
And what, so have we had any instances lately of our, of employees being prescribed a dr- a, a, a drug from this list that is not covered and the employee has to pay out of pocket?
Not that we're aware of, because what happens is since most plans have prior off, a lot of doctors are, are checking in advance and they're following the criteria, but there's always the chance that a doctor maybe doesn't look and just goes for it, right? And then that would leave the member liable.
And so my other question is to, to Bob, since this involves in employee benefits, is this something that the district decides on unilaterally, or is this in negotiation with the various unions?
This could be decided unilaterally because it's not uh denying benefits, it's just simply a mechanism.
A mechanism.
Yeah, to control costs primarily, make sure that people are getting the correct drugs.
Right, and yeah, really, the, the main effort with prior authorization is making sure people are getting clinically appropriate drugs. There's no, you know, experimentation, if you will.
Speaking of experimentation, Christina, could you maybe, I, I think there's a few articles out there. One of the things that is interesting to me and some, in some ways exciting is this is the new frontier for pharmacy and pharmaceuticals and medicines. And it's really some interesting reading around the subject. But as you can uh anticipate, the costs are going to be astronomical. So I think we want to be ahead of that curve. Um, there's not only ninety thousand dollar a year drugs, but there are literally drugs that could cost upwards of a million dollars a year, so.
Yep, and actually, yeah, I think Bob, you're talking about the gene therapy. And yes, the, the most expensive gene therapy did just get released at three point five million dollars um for that dose.
We would probably want preauthorization on that.
So I guess what I would recommend, since it was brought to the board for discussion, that there is no action taken by the district until it's been brought back to the board. Or it doesn't need to be for a board vote. But at the very least, board members should be aware, if this is a step that we're taking, and we should ask other folks and community members to take a look at this issue as well. And to remind folks that this is not preauthorization for all drugs. As I'm reading it, it's for specialty drugs specifically and a preauthorization process. Am I right in my reading?
I'm saying you're correct. Christina's going to say you're correct.
Yep, and it's actually even more specifically. So and even more specifically, it's specialty drugs through the medical plan.
Okay.
And there, there is a link uh in this document that, that uh we were sent. But when you check on the link, you have to be a member to sign in, and I'm not, so. If, if we could have a, a copy of the actual list rather than a link to the list, that would help those of us who are not on Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield.
And Bob, I think I read somewhere, it may be in this page here, that this is something that was recommended to us by Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield. Right, so this is not the district looking at this, this is our, the Blues saying to us, you should take a look at this.
Yeah, and I think, I don't want to speak for you, Christina, but you're also recommending that we do preauthorization, as, as am I. I was really concerned at the beginning, talking with Christina, getting the questions answered, really helped me to see that. I, I think this is a benefit, a benefit not only for the employee, but certainly for the district.
Sounds good. So there is not a vote this evening, we will have it come back to the board at some point in time. We look forward to that, we look forward to any additional information. And Christina, thank you for joining us at nine o'clock on a Tuesday.
My pleasure, thank you. Just let me know if there's any follow-up questions and have a great evening, everybody.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Great, we will continue on with our agenda. Um, that brings us to uh po- uh three policies that we have. Um, the policy committee um stays quite active, Pat, I would say, we're, we're an active committee. Uh, the first policy is a new policy, but not a new practice or procedure in the school district. Um, in fact, what we are doing with this new policy is bringing our policy in line with our practices. Um, this document is already available on the ICSD website. It's the Title IX and Sex Discrimination Procedures. We have given it a new policy number, which is zero one one six. So if you go looking for it in the policy book, you will not find it. Um, this would be uh our uh first reading. And so if this is the will and the want of the board, um, if it were to pass its first reading, it would go back to the policy committee for any updates, uh edits, additions, uh, and then it would come back to the full board for a second reading and adoption. Uh, before we get there, um, Amanda, I know you have worked uh very diligently on this policy as um, your expertise in, in DASSA in particular. Um, and I know we, you were working with Ms. Talke, but can I just ask you to speak briefly to this policy if, if that's appropriate?
I think that this, this is really a credit to um Ms. Talke and um Ms. Grover as well. They both have been um working with students around this. I know, um, you know, folks like Grace have been part of those groups.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, so I want to say thank you to, to all of you for, for, um, for doing that. So really what, what we've been trying to do is um to really show essentially for the Title IX, a compliance, but really to try to capture the spirit of what we, what we want the district to be, right? And so that's, policy is a great tool to do that. And you'll notice, um, you know, it's, it's a lengthy policy, right? But there's a lot of descriptions, there's a lot of uh definitions in there. Um, there's really some good tools around how to report, right? If you, if you disagree and grieve, so I think for me, you know, that although this feels long, it must be thorough. Because we really must be able to have that tool for us to be able to look towards, to guide our practice here. Not just as um administrators who are enforcing policies, the teachers who are working and the, and the staff who are working in the buildings, but the students too, to again, build sort of that capacity to be able to know what their rights are and to be able to speak to those rights and to be supportive of others. So Grace, did I capture that?
Is there anything that you would add, Grace?
Well, I, I would just add that what I've come to understand as the policy committee has looked at this, that a lot of the length is due to the fact that this is Title IX, which is federal law. And that a lot of what's in here has to be in here because of requirements of federal law. Um, and then we're going to look at another policy that overlaps with this. Um, that uh is, that addresses some of the same issues. Uh, but it is not specific to the requirements of federal law. Does that make sense?
Please, Grace. It's a combination of both. What we have unfortunately is a policy book that still has policies that were thirty years old. And what we're trying to do is to update uh a policy that may be in the thousand series, a policy that may be in the five thousand series, a policy that may be in the nine thousand series, and try to make it so it's actually in one location. So some of these, some of what you find in these seventeen pages, yes, is currently enacted in policy. But it's a combination as a whole about the process of how to make uh in a, an appeal, how to file a complaint, what the definitions are. That, this is what makes this a relatively new policy in that regard. But we do have policies in the books that do address Title IX and sex discrimination. Did I capture that? I hope. Uh, we can entertain motions at this point in time and then continue any conversation, discussion.
I move to approve policy zero one one six, Title IX and Sex Discrimination Procedures for a first reading.
Second.
Moved by Pat, seconded by Moira. Any additional questions, comments? Debates? Hearing none, I'll call the question for uh a first reading. All in favor? That passes, again, it will go to the policy committee and we will discuss in more detail and then hopefully bring back to the board. Um, the same thing happens for the next two policies that we'll be reviewing. The first policy is policy um twelve point eight. Um, this is policy zero one one five and zero one one five dash R. Student harassment and bullying prevention intervention for a first reading. This is a policy and a, a regulation that already exists. Um, but it was outdated and we decided to do a pretty thorough review and updating again, to bring our policy up to date with current practices and legal requirements. And this one, I know you were involved with, so let me ask uh Ms. Verba to speak to it as well.
Amanda Verba, I'm the Dignity Act Coordinator for the district. Um, and so I do this along with the, you know, the budget work and the capital project work. And um this is my heart work. Uh, I've been, I've been so proud to be able to be part of the Dignity Act um since its inception in two thousand and twelve and um worked in the original policy that were written by many, many wonderful, smart people here in Ithaca. I was at the time at T S T Bosse's, I am now your solo staff person and um work with so many, um, whether it be human resources and, and all the departments that, that we all sort of um support and manage. So you will see there is a policy which should be the briefer version, almost of just sort of like the, what, what our, sort of our belief system is right around um the Dignity Act and why that it matters for us. And then the, the zero one one five dash R are the regulations. And so the regulations are essentially the way that, that we would um, we would actually practice that goal, right? What, to adhere to the law. And so you'll notice with this specifically, as we know around um bullying, uh harassment, discrimination um and, and cyberbullying and hazing, a lot of the work is before it happens. You really want to be able to have prevention tools and strategies in place. And that is outlined here. Along then with what does that look like, sound like and feel like for training for staff, training for students? Um, and then the requirements of the law, there's a lot of requirements that are listed here and you'll see that language as well. And then finally, um, the way that we do investigations, there's always a lot of questions about that. Um, and sort of that, that is partial. And sort of that that is partial, partially the law and partially the way we as the district will conduct them. And then finally, you'll see some how to appeal. But the definitions are at the end. And I think we did that on purpose because we wanted to to give space for really outlining the nuances of the Dignity Act. A lot of people think that it's just bullying. Bullying is a part of what the Dignity Act means. And so, you know, we tried to define the different terms for folks. And I think for me, if you go to harassment, those those four sort of indented points there are really the 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 true kind of the the backbone of what the Bullying Act is. If any episode in a young person's life violates those things or feels like there those those things are are not being met, that's when we believe that there is a Dignity Act violation.
And board members, I am aware that I'm board docs. You do not see the policy. You only see the regulation. The policy is three paragraphs, but I'm not going to ask you obviously to vote on something that you have not read or seen. So we will. I don't want to table it because that's very specific. But I say that we hold this to our next board meeting so folks can see the full policy as well as the regulation. That is okay by the board. Fantastic. We'll get that up to you and we'll send it out via email. So folks have access to it beforehand as well. But I want to again, thank Amanda for all the the work, especially given the fact that a good portion of this changes with each administration. There are regularly changes about what should be expected. And so here we are changing it once again. So thank you. And we'll come back to this policy at a future board meeting. Our last set of policies has been a robust conversation for a couple of policy meetings. And it is policy five, four, two, three. Policy five, four, two, three dash R, the regulation and five, four, two, three dash P, which is the procedures. We got here through dialogue about trying to break out this in a way that would be helpful to us as a school district and our practitioners. And we are blessed here to have two guests. We'll ask you to introduce yourself and I will turn the policy conversation over your way. Great to have both you join us. How about you walk us through what we have here?
Happy to do so. So we arrived at this place in part because New York State issued updated guidance around medication management in schools last year. So that initiated a conversation internally about our policies around medication administration that involved Dr. John Dolly, Barb Masser, as well as several of our nurses. In the course of reviewing our policy, we recognized that there was a need to go further with it. So to adopt, to draft and adopt not only regulation, but also procedure. This is one of those activities that occurs multiple times across all of our schools. At this point in the school year, there's been hundreds, if not close to a thousand administration of medications. And it's one of the key pieces that we do, I think, really to support inclusion. We have students with chronic or acute medical concerns and the presence of a school nurse and the ability to take medication at school really enables their attendance and participation. And so that is what you see here in this, what once was a one page policy and now is a seven page policy, regulation and procedure. There hasn't been a whole lot of changes necessarily to the first page. There we strive to outline or make more clear a couple of key things. One, around the need to for parents or guardians to deliver medications to school. They can't be carried by children on buses. And also to specify additional elements around permission. So those details are included in the second paragraph. And the last thing I think is newly prescribed medications. That was not clear that once a medication is prescribed, the first dose should always be given at home and not at school. So that has been added. With respect to regulations, we added definitions which reflect the changes that New York State has put out as well. With respect to nurse dependent students, supervised students and independent students. So this reflects a level of maturity and autonomy among our students and their ability to identify medications and take them appropriately. So at the elementary level, nearly all of our students are supervised students or nurse dependent. And as they move through matriculate through our district, they many of them become independent students. And this reflects not just the the work of their practitioner and their family, but also the work of our school nurses who work closely with diabetics and students with seizures in order to help them really understand what the signs and symptoms are and appropriate response. So herein is are the definitions for those students and what is expected or required and how they're how they're identified. It goes on to discuss administration guidelines and these much of this language comes straight from New York State in terms of what must be included in a healthcare provider's order in terms of securing permission from parents, which happens annually at the start of every school year, at the start of their matriculation into the district. Then there's guidance around the administration by unlicensed personnel and the occasions under which this may happen. Which include students who are self directed or supervised or students who are independent, who require may potentially only assistance in some cases. Finally, under regulations, we speak to the administration of medication on field trips and after school activities. And again, that is organized based on whether a student is nurse dependent, supervised or independent. And then we briefly reference medication errors, which we fully discuss in procedures. So with the last section of this policy where we do discuss procedure, the vast majority is this is directed at nurses because they are responsible for medication management in their buildings. It's outlined in categories including security, training, administration, medication disposal and medication errors. Which are incredibly infrequent. I think in my time here, this is what, four years now, I can count on one hand how many medication errors we've had.
And for me, this is an example of the best of a policy creation procedure. And that it made us reflect on what we actually do and think a little bit more deeply and have conversations about what we should be doing. I don't know if you both felt that way during the process, but it was definitely informative to us as policy committee members.
If I haven't said it, yeah, I think I've said it at the policy committee, but I'd like to hear how grateful I am to the members of the policy committee because it really was a collaborative conversation. And the questions and your insights and recommendations really help move this process along and get us to a place where I feel very, very good about this.
I was expecting more from Dr. Dallow, but. Great. We are very appreciative. Well, and we have not entertained motions.
Okay. I am proud to move policy four, five, four, two, three, five, four, two, three, R and five, four, two, three, P. Administering administering medication to students, policy regulation and procedures for first reading.
Second.
We're going to give one to Eldred tonight. So moved by Moira, seconded by Eldred. Any other discussions, questions that we may have? Debate?
The policy committee has no more questions.
Plenty of questions.
Line by line, word by word. Yes, we did. Hearing then at this time, I'll call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous. Again, this will go back to the policy committee, then come back to the board. I thank everybody for a long evening. I don't know if there are any other business items.
We should remind people that tomorrow night is the exciting audit committee.
Yes.
And then we have another board meeting next Tuesday. Prior to the board meeting, there is a curriculum committee meeting. So we'll be seeing you all soon.
And a reminder for folks who have questions to check the ICSD budget website to gather additional information. And if there are no more other business items, we will bring the meeting to a close. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.